Okay, make a motion to open the meeting. Oh, I thought you were ready, because I heard recording.
No, that's okay. I'm just making sure this thing is on. Okay, we're good now.
Yeah, okay. I make a motion to open the meeting. Is there a second?
Second. Rocco, the ceiling here?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Stetson?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, does anybody have anything to disclose or any conflict of interest with the agenda items for us?
I do not.
You got it.
I do not. Do you want to?
Read my speech?
Yeah, read the speech. There'll be a quiz after.
Um, yeah, okay. The public will have opportunities to comment on specific agenda items when they occur in the meeting and also agenda items at the end of the meeting. Given this is workshop, it might not hold true through the whole meeting, but we will do our best. Speakers can comment once in each comment window if it is on a specific agenda item. It is not debate, deposition, or panel discussion. Speakers must step to the front of the room if physically able. Ultimately, they may provide comments from where they are seated. If an attendee is participating via web commerce technology such as Zoom, the clerk will announce how attendees should signal that they wish to comment. This may differ by platform, but it's typically accomplished by through the raise your hand feature. And that is what we're using. We're doing Zoom. And we have one attendee, so raise your hand. If you wish to comment, then put your comments into the public comment box, the Q and A. I do not check chat. Speakers must give their name, address, and organization. There shall be an exemption for any category of people protected by New York state law. If you are participating via Zoom, please include that because your very first comment you need in the address. I would appreciate that. Thank you. Speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer. Speakers must limit their remarks to three minutes on any given topic. Speakers may not yield any remaining time they have to another speaker. Gordon first may, with the permission of the mayor, only interrupt the speaker during their remarks for the purpose of clarification or information. Speakers must observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Interested parties of the representatives may address the board by written communications to village clerk@villagefitzford.com. All written communications will become part of the public record and will be attached to the minutes for that meeting. At the center's request, written communications will be read aloud by the clerk at the meeting and will adhere to the three-minute time limit. If printed materials or other media are provided by attendees during the meeting, they must be submitted to the village board with optional distribution to audience members. All materials will be part of the public record. Private distribution of materials to audience members only is prohibited. And that is all.
Thank you. Quite thorough. Actually, the intention today is really to have our budget workshop, but we do have just a couple of agenda items that we are going to begin with. Is Scott Harder on the line?
He is.
Okay.
He is my attendee, so I'm going to promote him right now.
Let's promote him. Okay, because the first item up is the approval of the RFQ for Architecture and Building Code Services regarding the project at 75 Monroe, known as Westport Crossing. Is he? Yes, Lily?
I have some clarification questions, because as you know, I was not at the meeting, but I did listen to it.
Okay.
So I have a couple of questions I'd like, I hope it can be addressed.
Can you hold one second, just real quick? Scott, are you on? Scott?
Yes, I am. Yes, I just, I just connected.
Oh, okay, great. Thanks, Scott. Okay. Welcome. Yeah, Lily just has a couple of questions.
I do. And that question is, I want to defer clarification for my own clarification. My understanding is that Scott wrote the RFQ. Is that, do I have that correct?
Yeah.
And he's also going to be a candidate in the RFQ. Do I, did I understand that? I'm double checking, because I'm hoping that I heard it all correctly from the tape.
He is at this point, although we certainly, he's our village engineer. We certainly could have a resolution tonight from the board to appoint him on this project as the engineer to oversee the project and oversee the other components of the RFQ.
Okay. So I guess my-
That was my recommendation initially in the last meeting.
Okay. So my question is, are we sending this RFQ out to several, or hopefully several firms?
Mm-hmm.
What, what is the, I'm going to use the word process, and I know that's not the right word, for an entity, or let's call it the engineer, to write the RFQ and also be a candidate at the same time and choose the firms which will be sent RFQs? Does that seem like an appearance of impropriety there or not?
We would have him put in the firms that the-
I mean, is he choosing the firms to which the people go?
He's not choosing, no. It comes from our village, not him.
These are firms on record that we have sent-
Right.
-estimates to before engineering services.
Okay, so that is a decision of the village clerk or?
The village office. That's going to happen in the village office. It's not happening on Scott's end. And initially, when this RFQ was drawn up, it was the intent that Scott was going to be the main engineer and we were looking for-
For the architectural component.
In the building.
Yeah, in the building.
Building component. We weren't looking at the general engineering.
Okay, so what I'm trying to make certain is that the process is, is being followed to the letter. In other words, I don't want anything coming back at the village and saying, "This is not correct," because you have used an engineer contrary, in a contrary way to what is outlined in their code of ethics. So if we're assured that that is not the case here, that the fact that Scott has written up this RFQ and is also, I don't know, wanted to get what he said on the RFQ.
I'm going to circle back to what I said at the last meeting. I'm glad you were able to see the tape. In that, it is my thought, and I think it would be appropriate, because Scott is our village engineer, he's worked on this project in the early days, he's familiar with the project, that we would appoint him, we can do this this evening, appoint him as engineer and have him move forward with the rest of the components, helping us with the RFQ, because those are things outside of his purview. The architectural component, he would not weigh in on. We would need a separate entity-
Okay.
...that's independent. I, that is something I brought up in the last meeting. I bring it back to the board. I think he, he's our guy. He knows, he knows the way forward with this, and he can work with all the parties involved and make sure that things are moving forward expeditiously. So regardless, you know, I hear what you're saying, but again, I brought up a completely different, not a completely, but a different opportunity for us, and somehow we're here with putting this bid out with a longer bid process involving other engineering firms, which we certainly can do. But I would like this board to consider a resolution appointing Scott as the engineer for this project going forward this evening, and then working on the other components of this project with the RFQ and helping us and helping us in the office pull in, you know, the bids, because that's something that he can work with, you know?
I have some questions. Are you done? I had some questions. You're all set? Okay. Scott, this might be a question for you. I, so what are we looking at here? This RFQ that's in the packet is for the construction phase quality control assurance.
Right.
This is not for, to review the engineering and not to review the architecture? Is this something else?
Um, no, I mean, the engineering and the architecture has all been reviewed and plans have been submitted, my knowledge, and those plans have been approved. And so now it's the actual execution, the construction, the confirmation that that which is constructed in the field is in agreement with that which was approved by the boards over quite a bit of time, if I understand it. So there are, there's, there's just the confirmation as to, as to what's been approved. There's also overseeing and making sure, for example, that easements are filed on certain utilities associated with the village, that stormwater controls and stormwater reports are filed as required by law. There's some, there's an element of construction management from the village perspective, not the construction management from the contractor's perspective. And so I can tell you, for example, I did the same, I had the same responsibilities when the flour mill project was constructed on, on shown place. And I was brought into that project when there were actually three stop work orders placed on the project by the building inspector at the time. And that involved, once again, quality control, quality assurance, making certain that the project was built according to the plans that were approved by the various boards. And eventually, we got through it. This is a larger scale project, but the, but the mission is still the same, making sure that the commitments and the conditions that came forth in the review process are implemented.
Okay, so Scott, the, the other question I had was around the, so we, we talked last time that it was time and materials, that it was not a fixed bid project. And I didn't see, and you were going to go back and write into it.
Right. I thought it was right here, right? Or is that different?
No, I, I indicated that, that we would work hourly on an exact scope of services in concert with conversations with the developer, and that once we understood those scopes of, the scope of service, then we would assign a budgetary number to that.
Yeah, like, where is that? I'm, I'm just wondering if I have the right document, because I didn't-
Let me, let me see if I can find it for you. I, I just have to call it up on my screen.
It's a 30-page document. That's the only one I think we should see.
Yeah, it's the one that came out last night.
Yeah, it was in the, it was in the update.
So, so the-
You see the hourly reflective and not the other piece you're talking about?
Yeah, so four of the packet, I, I see it, and then it ends on page five. We've got Cold Spring Construction, and then we go into, I'm just wondering if I got the whole thing.
Um, let me just read what I have in front of me here.
Well, hold on one minute.
Here's the whole thing.
On page, page three of the RFP, RFQ draft two dash R1, there is a paragraph that speaks to exactly what I said, which is what you had asked me to do the last time we spoke.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I'm not sure we have the same document.
Can I read, can I read you the paragraph that I have in front of me and?
Which page was that on, please, Scott?
It's on, uh, let's see, it's on page two of three of the PDF I sent, entitled 75 Monroe RFQ Draft Two Dash R1.
Well, that we don't have, we have a printout of whatever it was. So is it, so it's under scope of services, am I correct?
Um, let me just scroll up here. It's under scope of services. It is the one, two, three, four, five. It's the last paragraph.
And it starts with, "In order to establish a budget for an escrow account to cover the consultant's fees?"
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, there it is.
There it is, right here.
Okay.
Oh, you, oh, you have it on your screen. Okay.
Okay. All right, I see what you did there. Thank you.
And that was, that was really, I mean, at this junct, at this juncture, we don't, I don't know every single shred of information that is related to what we need to do here. So this is, you know, this generalizes what we need to do, and in fact, finding is part of the charge in order to create that scope of services.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments from?
So back to Lily's question. Our two choices here are to accept this and engineering wouldn't be included in it. And because her question is whether we need to put a bid up for an engineer when we-
When we have-
Have a village engineer. I think it's a good question, though, like for a project this size. So our two choices are to accept this and have, or adopt this, or whatever we want to call it, accept this RFP and send it out to bid, and appoint Scott as the engineer, or accept this, send this out, send the RFP out, and also then have to come up with an RFP for a village engineer.
I, I, I think the way it's written, I, I wrote it for, for engineering and architectural services. It's, it's in there. So, you know, you are certainly entitled to do exactly what you just said. Put it out to the market and, and see what you, what you come back with. That's perfectly fine. I, I, I'm not, I'm not trying to dominate this in any way, shape, or form.
No, I think we understand that, you know? I'm just thinking of, at least, you know, there's three components that we're looking for here, and at least we know we can satisfy one of those components and, and, you know, be more expeditious really for us on our end, I think. That's, that's my take on it.
I'm much more in favor of putting it out, and if Scott responds to it, we evaluate Scott as one of the candidates.
To eliminate any sub-questions with the party.
Yeah. It's just for-
Like he's going to be the best candidate, but we don't know.
Right. It's just more defensible if we put it out to bid, more defensible from sort of a moral standpoint.
Well, he's, okay, okay. I, I, I think that is defensible either way, because he is already our village engineer. In other words, we've already vetted him, he's qualified, you know? So I think, you know, it passes that test or passes that benchmark, you know, by virtue of the fact that he's been our village engineer literally for years.
And, and I respect that. I just, we've never had a project of this scope.
Yeah, well, Scott, have you had projects this large?
And, and, and his, his, well-
Yep.
Evaluating his credentials would be part of a process.
Sure. Okay, excuse me, one second, Lily.
I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. I want, I want to be clear that, could we separate this out so that, yes, if your interest is to have Scott as the engineer on this specifically assigned to this project, then that is one job, if you will, one commission. He wouldn't also be in the running as a candidate. He would be overseeing whoever the village determines would be the firm.
For the other components, he would, he would help together that team.
In other words, he's not going to put his hat in-
No.
The way I heard the other night, that he could contact-
Right.
-architectural firms, they could join together, he could find good people and so on.
Right.
So now they're talking about separating this now.
Yes.
So that Scott would oversee, once the village determines that he will not also be a candidate.
Right, right.
So that would answer my question as far as being-
Right, he'd have the engineering component, because he's our village engineer, and then the rest would be out to bid-
Okay.
-with other firms, for those other components.
But they, when we set out to bid, they might also include engineering. It could be a firm that's a combination engineer, I know it's rare, engineering and architectural. So we're not just looking at the architectural, are we? So he's going to be engineer, take that out.
The engineering component would be taken, would be removed, because that has been satisfied if we choose to appoint him-
I see.
-to move forward with that piece. The, the remainder goes right out to bid.
Would just be the-
Right, right.
Other, as a part of it.
Architectural and the building, you know, the code enforcement, you know, all the oversight on that end.
Okay.
So we're still bidding the rest of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
The architectural component.
Mm-hmm.
So do we need to change anything if we were to do that?
We would amend it. It would be, we could, we could, you know, pass a resolution to amend it as such.
Okay, I think-
I think that's how we would do it at this point. You know, it's pretty, it's a couple pages, it's an RFQ. You know, that's where we are.
We would be looking at it again then, at another meeting, or you would-
The bits, you wanted to try, let Cynthia go through the process for us about how this would work.
If the board approved us to go out with the amendment of removing the general engineering component out of the thing, we'd put out the bids, we'd get out all the bids in, the commission would be brought to the board to review that and make the decision on which firms to go.
And just fill our obligation as far as, what is the word requisite, when we're looking for firms to-
Permit, probably.
Yes, per summits. Yeah, it does. Because he has specific knowledge, knowledge specific to the village and that-
Correct, he's already assigned as a village engineer. We've already made that determination, used it consistently in that process.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Scott, my own feelings on this, I just want to be clear, it has nothing to do with you and your performance.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, if, if you put your name in and were the best candidate, you know, I'd have no problem approving it. It, it's more just a process thing. I definitely want to hear from people. I saw a couple hands up. Are we at that stage?
Scott, is there anything else from the board? Okay, why don't we take, you know, some thoughts or comments? Okay, Chris, and then you had your hand up as well?
Yeah, I think Cynthia most likely.
Oh, okay, okay. Process stuff, okay. Yes, um, yes, state your name, please, and, you know.
Chris Tamarzo, Pittsburgh, Canales, property. Thanks for taking the time with this. It's important. We've been here a long time, we're ready to go. At the risk of the common sense in the room, the board needs to be reminded maybe that Scott Harder started in this project 15 years ago, and he has hours and hours of experience and background information that no engineer has. Not to mention, I've paid Scott already to review the drawings up to 2014 where we stopped. And at 2014, he approved those drawings. They were done until lawsuits happened. And so I have the village, and through me, I've already paid Scott to review these. Now, if you went to an RFP, you'd have to bid it out to someone that has to re-familiarize themselves, that doesn't know the details of the history of how things got to where they are, and start over, which I'd have to pay for again, which doesn't make sense to me as an applicant. And so, under the mayor's suggestion to just appoint him to manage the process, he's already, he already, he's already there. He can, he can start from now and go. I would strongly ask the board to do that, number one. Number two, in terms of timing, we have plans that are sitting on my desk, ready to submit, and I just keep waiting for the village to hire an engineer to look at the drawings. We've already gone out, I think I mentioned on the phone last week, to the Department of Transportation, the DEC, Health Department. We've already gone to these, they're reviewing the drawings already. The village is behind. I requested that the village hire someone starting November, or in January. If we go with the RFQ, there's no timeframe on here. So let's say you put a timeframe on. Let's say you say two weeks for qualifications, then you're going to get a group of engineers, you're going to review the qualifications, that's going to take another 30 days. Then you hire someone at that point. Then they have to go back in history, review everything that Scott already knows, and then start from there. So we're looking at 60 to 90 days before they start the review. So I'm, I'm begging you, let's take the easy route, common sense. He knows what he's doing, he's a professional, he's a board member in other towns, he gets it. And I have no ties to Scott, other than we've been working together on this from the beginning. I can't think of a reason why he wouldn't be the engineer.
Okay, thank you.
So if there's any way to expedite this, please, let's expedite it. I don't think it needs an RFQ. It's not, there's nothing going on behind the scenes. Scott is a third-party professional. He would have the same obligation to you as any other third-party would.
Thanks, Chris. No, appreciate that.
From a communication standpoint, I would have liked to have known that we were going to be considering this. So the last time we talked about it, we were talking about the whole thing. We were talking about architecture, engineering, and is there a third component?
That Scott would put his name in for consideration.
Yeah.
That, that was what you folks came up with. What I had already proposed again tonight, I proposed at the last meeting. And the response was, from you folks, that you wanted to have this full RFP, put it out to engineers, and here we are. I still am bringing back to the board that we have an engineer who's familiar with the project, he's vetted already. He's vetted. We know his qualifications. That's why, you know, in our organizational meetings, we, we had brought him back year after year as our village engineer, because he does an excellent job. So there were two paths that were discussed at the last meeting, and now we're dealing with this particular path. But we certainly can pull out that engineering, you know, as you said, you can pull out the engineering piece-
Yes.
-and then put the rest out-
Yes.
-you know, for bid, and move forward, you know, start to move forward anyway. So I think that's a, as a practical matter, I'm in agreement with that, with what you're saying.
Yes, because I, I do not disagree. I agree with the concept of Scott, because I know, having been involved in it, that he has been there since the very beginning, and he has the institutional knowledge that will be most useful on the, to us on the project. So I have no question about his qualifications. I was, I was most concerned about the, the conflict of interest piece and appearance of impropriety. So since that has been answered, I, by removing the engineering piece, making him in charge of the project in that regard, and putting the RFQ out for the architectural, then I'm, I'm in agreement with that.
All right. Yes, we have a book on it. Okay.
Mr. Ferrisher allowed to speak?
This is David Ferris, 27 Monroe. Can you hear me?
Yes. Hi, David, how are you?
I think this should go out to a bid for a variety of reasons. And, you know, a bid process is really running a contest. Again, I understand Scott's credentials, but what we're saying is, we're going to have someone determine the rules of the contest, be a contestant, and also be the person to review the entries to see who the winner is. The board is going to need someone to judge those responses. I also think by segmenting this, which I disagree with, you're going to have fewer bidders for a portion of it, where many firms would handle all these aspects in one firm. So you're going to say, well, who's an architect? I assume this is going to run into 10,000, tenths of thousands of dollars and should be put out to a bid. And if Scott's going to be a bidder, then I think a determination should be made now. Who's going to review it? Because I don't have the skills nor even that board to evaluate proposals of this nature. You'll need another professional to make the judgment of the best bid. So I think clearly it should go out to bid. I think Scott should clearly say, does he want to be a bidder or not? If so, then we should have another professional be running the process, review the RFP, put it out, and be the one that does the evaluation for the board and the village's best interest.
Dave, I hear you. One thing I want to gently push back on, ultimately, the decision as to who is awarded, the, the work is done by the trustees.
I appreciate that, but you don't have their professional expertise. Take the Shane Place bids, for example, those were evaluated, and Scott said this is a firm that's met the scope of the proposal requirement. Somebody has to make that determination, and it's fairly technical.
Yeah, agreed. Understood. Thank you.
And, and also understand that the, the expenses incurred for this project will be picked up by the applicant, not the village. So, and, and so to that end, again, I think really is a practical matter. I'm, Lily, I support, you know, that, that process of going forward with a vetted village engineer who's familiar with the project. And I think the point was made that, you know, there's virtually no learning curve, you know? He can jump right in and also help with the other aspects of the bid, which he has no, no interest in. I mean, he's not an architect, and he's not, you know, into code enforcement that way. So his piece is the engineering component.
Lily, I had a question for you. I couldn't quite understand your position. So you're in favor of Scott-
Yes.
-doing the engineering work-
Yes.
-from today forward?
Yes.
Okay.
And amending the RFP to reflect that.
Yes, as long as he was not a part of the process of the RFQ, so that there was no appearance of impropriety there. In other words, because he, the board is making the decision, he is also not putting his, his hat in the ring, so to speak, as an applicant for the RFQ.
On the, on the architecture side?
Yeah, well, but I heard the other night at the meeting that he wanted to form-
Yeah.
-casually form a group that included him and-
That was if he was going to respond.
Right.
But now-
Now that he's not-
Right.
Then that changes it for me, because he's not involved, he is, it's not a conflict. I was concerned about the conflict part of it, because I don't want the village to be at risk in any way. Okay, so, is that more favorable to you? So is that more favorable to you?
That helps. Thank you.
So given that Scott is our engineer, do we have to? He's already been appointed engineer.
No, we would make a resolution this evening to remove the component. This would be a resolution that I would welcome. I'll try to frame it. We would remove the component from the RFP to put out to bid for the engineer. And at the same time, we would make the appointment of our village engineer, Scott Harder, to be the engineer overseeing this project and helping us to manage this RFP process for the other components that remain going out to bid, which is the architectural review and the, what was it? Building, I think it was, what was the name?
Building Oversight. Construction and WARE.
Code compliance. Thank you. So, because that's something that wouldn't be in his purview anyway. He is an engineer. That's his purview. So we're pulling that piece out.
Yep. So it doesn't need our best practices, like best value, I'm forgetting the policy, but would apply here.
Yeah, yes. Right, because he's already our village engineer. He has been vetted. Essentially, he's, you know, we have his qualifications. So that piece would be pulled out.
Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion? That sounded like a motion.
There kind of was one, wasn't there?
Why don't you reiterate?
Okay. Let me give it a shot. I make a motion that we issue the RFQ before us with the amendment that the piece for the engineer be removed. And we further appoint our village engineer, Scott Harder, to oversee the project, the engineering component, and work with the village to oversee the RFP process going forward. Is that pretty much all I said?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second? Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Linder.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Did you have something you wanted to add?
Oh, do we have a discussion? I'm sorry.
Yeah, we didn't get a discussion. Do we need to add anything in there that he's not going to, to Mr. Ferris's point about concern that he would, Scott Harder would be choosing these firms? He's going to help the village. He'll make the ultimate decision.
No, we make the decision. He just helps us manage the process and, you know.
Yep.
Okay.
I don't think that needs to be in writing.
We don't need our...
That's just the process.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Fair enough.
We did have a second, so now we're going, okay.
You already voted, I'm sorry.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Okay. Trustee Linder was yes. Trustee Keating was yes. Trustee Spitzer?
Yes.
Mayor Plummer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Scott, you have a job to do.
Okay. I guess I will modify that document then and send it back to you for confirmation. Is that okay?
Yes. Perfect.
Well, I'm sorry. I was about to say the same thing, which is that I'd like to conditionally approve it so that we don't waste another cycle.
Okay.
And so I want to approve it per Scott's directed changes.
Good one.
In that case, do we give the mayor the final? How do we do that? Or we just assume he's going to do it?
If it's done, it's not offered.
You can just...
Yeah, all he's doing is removing the engineer.
He's just removing that piece.
All right.
And certainly, what you can do is certainly when he sends it back to us, we can put it back to the board.
If anybody has a problem.
Yeah. And a...
Could I just add something real quick?
Of course. Even...
Relative to my role as you've approved it, the function, I think, would also be for me then to sort of be the quarterback of the situation with respect to the other professionals that we retain to come in for support, such as an architect, such as a landscape architect, whoever they may be. I mean, I think my role, as I see it, would be to be the point person using my background and knowledge of this project and coordinating with the others, whoever they turn out to be.
I think as a practical matter, I think that's where we were going anyway.
I just wanted to make sure that, in other words, I didn't want us to be potentially three or four entities out there that aren't in sync with one another. I think it's important for us to, whoever is selected for the remaining professionals, it's really important for us to function as a team.
Yeah, understood. And in fact, when we had the other, you know, the last bids that we put out, it was South and Wood, and now we're expanding to Sutherland. I mean, that really has been your role anyway, you know, really quarterbacking. You're the point person, and you work with us in the office, you know, with the staff here as questions come in and... So I think we're all in check. Yeah, Lily just wants to add something here.
I do. I just want to request that the village clerk add to our minutes the requirements for procurement, at least that portion that we're talking about here, to justify, for the record, the reason why we, as a village, are able to appoint Scott Harder as our engineer on this project. What are the guidelines, which are, he has...
We have our professional services.
Yes, under professional service. And these are the reasons why.
We can show that he was appointed.
And why don't you just send that to the board as well, just so everybody's on the same page with that? Thank you. That's a good idea. Okay?
Okay, we had a motion by Dan.
Does the motion have to have a date?
I would anticipate we want to get this out sooner than later.
Right. And what is the timeframe of the length of the RFQ?
If Scott can get things settled, redone, I'm going to guess, and I'm going to put pressure on him to have it by Friday. I can have it to the paper by Monday. You need 10 days on a bid process, at least.
Yeah, she'll come up with the dates.
You're going to the architecture and code department.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
I would say if he can, making a bid opened by February 2nd, we could present to the board by February 9th. Does that sound right to you, Scott?
Yeah. And one thing I would suggest, based on this discussion, is if you've appointed me to do what you said you did, then what I can do to help expedite things, which I've understood is important, is I can get a lot of the groundwork done with Chris and his engineer and get things ready, kind of working in parallel, if you will, while this goes out into the marketplace.
Okay.
You can add to February 6th.
February 6th?
Yes.
So February 6th is the date that we're asking for applications to be returned by?
No.
And then we, what day, I'm sorry, what day of the week is that?
That's Monday. We get them in on Monday. Scott would review them. And then we'd make recommendations to the board for the 9th.
And our next meeting is the 9th.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
So that's...
Is that kind of a short runway, as far as a firm reviewing such a large project and trying to make a determination?
It's an RFQ. You know, it's not a formal proposal. You know, it's really more an oversight. You know, from this point forward, you know, the roles, as I understand it, these are, you know, there's, they're not discretionary, you know. Did they do it? Did we check it out? They're overseeing, they're checking things off the list. They're looking at, did they meet this benchmark? You know, there's no sort of gray area. It either happened or it didn't, you know. So it's an RFQ, which is, I think, different than the fuller scope of like an RFP.
Right. It's not so much coming out, taking a look at the site, and what you're going to charge for building it.
Yeah.
Well, no. If nobody responds, or we only give one response.
That's an issue just even with the market right now. We're going to do it. Get it going. Okay.
Okay.
All right. Okay? Thank you.
And obviously, if you don't get anything back, we extend it. And we're proactively reaching out to firms that we think might...
We're going to send it to everybody in their cousin and...
Yeah, we internally have a list of firms.
We have a list.
Worthie, I sent you recently by email the latest publication of the Rochester Engineering Society magazine that I think every single consulting firm in our area that you can include for this.
Yep, that's excellent. And we thank you for that.
Okay, so you need a motion?
You made the motion.
Okay. You captured it?
Sure.
What was the motion again?
Motion was to approve the RFP with the changes as opposed to award. Scott to do it with the bid dates due by February 6th.
Dates included in the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, just so we're clear.
Do we want to put it out for public comment before we get to a vote? Does anybody have a challenge? Anybody want to join in?
I got nothing.
Thank you. We're moving along here. Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Remind me of the motion again. This was the changes to the RFQ.
Yeah, just the amendment and then the dates that we're looking at those.
I'll second that.
And authorizing to put it out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Trustee Spitzer?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Linder?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Scott, and, you know, thanks, buddy, for their input as well. Do we need Scott for the Cold Springs? We don't need him for that. Okay.
That's a question, though. Ask it.
I think we're set, Scott.
Okay, thank you.
There might be another question.
He doesn't need to be here for his...
Oh, it's a different question. You don't need to be here. You are released to the universe.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Scott, for your help.
Yep. Bye-bye.
Bye.
You didn't make the motion as well, please.
Yes.
Okay. You did that first, first time.
Yeah, that was the first one.
Like totally, thank you.
Yep. No, I know. It's a long day for everybody.
We segmented it in some...
I know. I know. Okay.
Can I ask them before you move on?
Yep, sure.
Thank you. I think that'll answer everything. I appreciate you being there. The second question I had in regard to Westport is if you had any thoughts on the reference to Comida to assist you with the...
That's on the agenda.
It's not.
Thank you.
It's not. It was Plummer last week.
It was definitely intended that we talk about it at this meeting. Yep. Good.
Right.
Have the attorney review it.
Yeah, yeah. Actually, Attorney Dan Spitzer's out of town right now. I just spoke with him briefly on the phone. I'm wondering, I see he didn't, I didn't hear back from him.
I didn't get anything.
I know.
So we got an email from him. So I asked him a question, and everybody was copied on it. Did you see this email from Dan?
Yes, I have not had a chance to go over my notes. So I couldn't, I really answered it.
Yeah. So what Dan said that struck me the most in that was that an offer to write a letter to Comida on behalf of the development was included in the non-binding letter from the three boards in 2021. It was one of the things that we offered, the three boards offered. Isn't that what Dan said in his note? I can pull up Dan's note.
Yeah, I know.
I think it was a bargaining point, is that what, I think that was.
Yeah. But if the intent was by those three boards to offer that, then I think it was discussed, it was PZB, H, PZBA, HPB, and trustees. We're all signed.
That was signed.
Yeah.
I don't believe the PZBA signed that.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It was just the HPB and, okay. So two boards signed off on that idea, and that makes it, I don't want to overrule what those two boards said that they were comfortable doing.
Are we discussing this really now?
I guess we are discussing this now, because, you know, you folks are here, and it's pertinent, you know, to the project. So I could say, I can tell you that in the conversation I had with Dan, he did want to remove the word restaurant from that, just saying it just wasn't part of the original. And also, I'm looking at his letter now, and he writes, "In the non-binding settlement parameters letter, copy attached," so you all have the copy, "the three boards included an offer of a support letter, and again, no agreement was ever reached." So I think you're correct, Renee, that there was, that nothing was ever closed out. And he said, "To my knowledge, the trustees have never agreed to supply, to provide a support letter." So it's back with us.
Yeah. So there is the letter, item 11, "The Village Board Will Support An Application To Comida." So I take that letter very seriously, that we asked them to do the following things, and they did most of them. And so I think we then do our part. I mean, I don't have anything, we do what we said, which was write it, "Support An Application To Comida."
I would support it, but leave out the term restaurant.
Here's one of the reasons I'm hesitating.
Okay.
Is that it's not on the agenda. And so before making a decision on it at this meeting, I would prefer that we do it at perhaps the next meeting on the 26th, so that we can put it on the agenda and people know that it's...
Sure.
I think that's more transparent, I feel.
Okay. Well, yes and no. So here's my challenge with that. I literally just said on the last item that I was concerned that there was a change to what we were doing with the RFP. There was a change to what we agreed would be the direction for the RFP and RFQ. And I got told, well, but yeah, we also talked about this other thing at the last meeting, and so, you know. And I just wanted to know before I walked in the door. And we all very clearly knew that we were going to talk about Comida today. And I didn't look at the agenda beforehand. If I had, I would have said, yeah. We all agreed we were going to talk about this, that we were going to, at the last meeting, we said very clearly. I raised my hand and said, "Have we shown this to Dan Spitzer?" The answer was no. So Alisa did that. We got response. We were all copied on it. It wasn't implied that we were going to talk about it. We were directly going to talk about it at this meeting.
And it was stated publicly as well. So that's...
Well, I guess that talking is fine. I just don't want to take an action on it, because it has not been agenda. But the first one, as to your point, is on the agenda, the RFQ. That is on the agenda. So I feel comfortable that we made a determination on that. The Comida fund decision is not. So we could put that on the agenda the next time.
So it's a no. It's next week.
What's the deadline for your...
Yeah, what's your deadline? I mean, if it's on next week, and we can take care of it.
It's the end of the world if it has to wait. However, if everything waits till next week, nothing gets done. My request to you is, it's a simple letter saying that you support me and my application. It will help the project move forward. It's very difficult to proceed without Comida.
Our letter doesn't hinge on Mother Night You Get Comida, though. I mean, and I want the public to understand that. And I know you all know that as well.
Comida definitely...
That it's a nice thing to do, because now this project has been approved in our village, and it's a way of moving forward. I understand, but I want the public to...
For the majority of us, with or without your support. For the majority to work with us, with or without your support. So, it's helpful.
Understood.
If the board agrees to look at it next week, that's fine. If you can do it tonight, it's even better.
So, why don't we put it on, I mean, it's, it's next Thursday. So, let's put it on the agenda for next Thursday. We'll have, you know, the draft here. We'll, we'll put it in the packet. Everybody will see it. And we'll handle it.
I think what you said is correct, that I think the taxpayers are going to want to understand what this means for them as a village going forward. It's only fair that they understand.
Yep. Okay, so.
And that, that it was very, it was agreed to do. So, that, that's part of the story as well, that, that three boards signed off on previously.
Yeah, and it was agreed that we have, you know, Attorney Spitzer review it as well. So, we'll circle back. He did weigh in and we'll, we'll put it on the agenda publicly next week.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just very wary to change what we said we would do.
Okay, we appreciate that. And again, it's on the agenda next week and I'd like us to move along. The next up, and thank you, thank you both of you. And thanks for your input as well.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Next up, approval of the quote from Cold Springs. And today was probably very cold springs. Okay, Zach.
Do you guys have a chance to review it? It's basically.
I'm struggling today, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, come up so, you know, we can hear you.
I apologize, I missed it. So, as you guys know, the, you in particular, because you've been on the board for a long time, you've heard all my gripes about the election system that we have, with the streetlights around Maine and state. There's a handle that is, it serves the purpose of a breaker box. And it's right in the walkway at the crosswalk in front of Pontellos. And it's subject to a lot of moisture and bad conditions. And it's 35 years old at this point and it needs to be replaced because we're chasing problems with it. The clock is continuously failing. It's not functioning properly.
It's the key to the clock, yeah.
And also the streetlights. So, it's basically a breaker box that sits in this concrete well and the breaker box needs to be replaced.
It's at the end of its life essentially, and so it needs.
Yeah, so what these guys are proposing, and they're still in town, which is great because it's been difficult to find any contractors to come through and do any work. For $3,400, they go through, replace the, the panel box and clean up all the connections going to it.
And it's going to get some moisture problems.
Sorry. Well, for the next 35 years.
Okay. We're good for 35 years, Lily.
So, will this get Michael Slade off my back of the clock is wrong?
It will. I was thinking.
No guarantees. Once it comes back, it'll better function.
I would say that right to his face.
It's going to be running three minutes behind.
Oh, yeah.
I hope you see all four faces at once.
I know. I don't know how that happens, but it's, it's a thing. I know.
Very concerned about it every single time I've seen him over the last five years.
Yeah.
So, and, and I also have informed him that, you know, the clock has been sent to the spa to be redone. So, now it'll run, run on time, right, so.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay, so there's second.
And it's 1,200 bucks. It's below our threshold, right?
No, no, no.
It's, it's over the threshold.
Yeah, that's why, that's why it's right here.
This would be best value, given the contractor is in town, that he's familiar with the system already because he did some repairs for us. It is the contractor that is doing the work for New York State DOT. And at this point, they're pretty well familiar with what's going on.
So, that answers.
Yeah, it's time to that. Okay.
Yep.
It's important to use them.
Yep.
All right, I will make a motion that we approve the.
You have a motion? We have a motion. We need a second?
Okay.
Okay. Dan made it. You're, you're confirming his motion.
Second, I am.
Yeah.
She's confirming my second. She can have one.
Okay. We've got a lot of motions and seconds, so I think we're all in sync. So, how about a roll call?
Sure. Trustee Lynn Fear.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion justice.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thanks, thank you, Zach, for calling.
You guys, Brooklyn, you can also come on up.
Yeah, let's, yeah. Okay, so now we're, we're sort of switching over to really what, what, you know, we're about here today. And that's just the first sort of budget workshop. And at first, I'd like to say thank you so much to Dorothea and Brooklyn and Zach, really just pulling, you know, the information together, the materials together. Some really good work. And at least, you know, we can get the ball rolling. And I think, I think that's just great. So, well, with that being said, Dorothea, you want to kick it off?
Sure.
Adam Treasurer?
Yep. The first thing I did present is the tentative meeting schedule real quick, if the board sees any issues with that.
Wait, what?
The tentative meeting schedule.
Oh, gosh.
Can you give me a moment?
Did I get that?
Yep, it's in the packet.
Oh, sorry, I did, I only got the packet.
It's still on the airplane.
Yeah.
It's just, you know, just.
Yeah, I was trying to see if anything jumps out.
Yeah.
It's every two weeks.
I think it's all right.
Yeah, I mean, it brings us right up to typically where we have to sign off.
Yes.
Okay, so Lily's good with that. Any, any other questions on our, our schedule for that?
Can we circle back to that so I can look at my calendar? I'm sorry. But, I mean, keep going and then.
Okay, so everybody look at that for the.
One quick thing, we don't, we may not need all these meetings. This is just, you know, if, if we need a whole bunch of meetings, this is how.
Okay, and so if we don't have a quorum, we'd have to just reschedule, so.
Correct. And in the same context, if, wow, I lost my thought process. In the same context, if we don't have enough, we always can schedule more. Did you end up with just all the agendas?
No, we can't.
That's what I got.
That's why. That's why I had to run it twice. That's why I had to.
This point, you're more committed to memory, you know.
Okay.
I also want to say thank you to you guys for breaking out the meetings by theme, which is really helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, that today it's ARPA and reserve, next time it's wish lists and general expenses. And I know that we may not stick to those and then might lean into each other. But at least we have a direction and a plan, and that's very helpful. I'm also very grateful that these are not weekly as they were in years past. So, thank you for that as well.
Yeah. I need time in between to digest what the board made decisions and come back with numbers. So, we'll start with ARPA. There has been a lot of discussion and wish list and everybody, what everybody wants. And again, this is coming from the Budget Committee. This is our suggestion on the use of the ARPA funds. What I would like the board to do is make final decisions on these because the funds do need to get spent by 2024 or projects in the making in 2024. So, we really, I'd like to close this out sooner than later and have our projects done by 2024.
Oh, okay, 2020.
I think that's reasonable, given the amount of money we have. Right now, what you're seeing, the only project that was approved so far was the rain creek. A portion of that needs to be paid by the residents. We're still working out that portion to bill them out. So, we have that project completed. So, that 18-5, there might be a recap, recoup back into the funds available.
It could be something around 2,500 or 3,000 roughly.
Right, that we can apply to other projects. Okay.
Yeah.
So, I'm just going to go through this list and these are estimates at best. We're working on getting final numbers and some require the RFPs, RFQs. We have the consultant for the DPW Arboretum, a village-wide and arboretum invasive removal program, Village Hall Meeting Room Upgrades, Village Hall Rug Replacement, DPW Bathroom Renovation, DPW Generator, and Street Trees.
And those are the, that's, that's what you had put in for your wish list?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, these are estimates. If the board, you know, that's your decision. This is what the committee felt was the best use of the funds.
And remind me what that committee is again?
It's the Budget Committee. We put together to try to.
You saw that committee?
It's Brooklyn, Zach, me, and the mayor. Trustee Lightgib initially was on and he removed himself from the committee. So, it's just the four of us.
Can I ask a question about the, the second one on the item? It says 15,000 to be offset by grants. So, are we saying 15,000 as a ceiling there and then we'll get grants and maybe it will bring that number down or?
We're saying 15,000, we want to commit 15,000 of the ARPA funds and we're hoping we can offset additional work, whatever more might be.
So, more than the 15. We're not saying 15, we need to see grants.
15 is the base.
15 is the base. We're saying 15 base from ARPA funds to go towards invasive removals within the village.
But we know it's going to be more than 15 because invasives are throughout our village. And, you know, not just in the arboretum, but really throughout our village. So, we, I think this is a way to recognize this going forward, that we still need to keep reaching out for grants and working with PRISM and, you know, all those other.
I think it's a starting number for that. I don't think the invasives are going to go away. I think, you know, we need to.
It's ongoing.
Yeah. You know, is this something we're going to have to look at in the budget? Absolutely. I think we're going to have to start planning some numbers in the budget to cover this. But this is a starting point. So, it's a good use of those funds.
Can you help me understand the math in here? So, I look at this and it's 200,000 roughly worth of projects and 137 in funds. So, you're asking us to change.
I'm stretching those dollars, really?
No, 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 come on.
No, no. What we're doing, okay, if, let's go to the meeting hall, rug upgrades, 20,000 for that project. 25% of that needs to be covered by sewer funds.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so there is, the whole project is 20.
Right.
But only 15 of that would.
Will come out of ARPA.
Okay. And so, same thing on item 5, 50K and 60% of that. So, we're looking at 20K would come from the ARPA funds. Okay. And so, does that total the 137?
It's going to be close.
Okay.
It's going to be close because these are all general estimates. We're going to bring these numbers. First of all, we have to all agree that these are good projects to move forward and you want us to move forward. Because there's no point putting legwork into a project and the board say, "We don't want to do that." So.
Is, are these prioritized in any order?
These are the ones that we felt were the greatest need.
Okay, from one to seven?
Uh, no.
Okay, just all.
These are, these are the top projects we thought of all the things.
In no particular order. But yeah, they're not ranked in any special way.
Actually, I would rank one. I would say the bathrooms at the DPW are number one.
Okay.
Has it gone down? Make sure that, that.
No, that's not.
Yeah, but we went through this at one of your.
I will, that's my personal.
Shower, you need a sink in your own, like, using the kitchen right now.
Yeah, yeah. People get changed in my office.
Right, right.
Yeah, it's.
That's my personal recommendation. No matter what, that's the opportunity to fix the situation. No matter what happens down the road with that building, they need a proper bathroom facility and shower. And the reason that really ties into sewer is because they're working in the sewers. And they should be able to shower.
Fair enough.
Shower, lockers.
Laundry, yeah, changing. Dorothea, can you remind me how this does or does not connect to South? And what we were going to do in terms of funding a redo of the?
It doesn't.
It doesn't connect?
No.
We couldn't use that fund, these funds for that?
We could, but it's not enough to make a difference. It really isn't. You're looking for the South project, we're looking 350,000.
Right, but.
And we have 100,000 in grant.
Yeah, we have, part of it's already grant.
So, these are some projects we could actually nail down and get off our list. They're just done.
Because these have been on the list for a while.
We're still going to have to budget and fund that other project no matter what we do. And we'll have CHIPS and we'll have other funds we can use towards that. And we're still doing engineering.
Yeah. I was confusing CHIPS and ARPA.
Oh, okay. We're getting our next CHIPS. When is that? It's coming in soon, right? April, could we get another CHIPS? Okay.
Yeah.
The reason I'm asking that, obviously, is that we've kicked the can down the road on South for many years.
Correct.
And, and so, I'm hoping, yeah, and I.
We'll sell South a bit.
Right, and, and I hear you and I agree with you. I just want to push back a little bit on the reason. And just because you couldn't fund a project, it wouldn't fund the whole thing. Do you see what I mean?
No, I understand.
It's not a good reason not to do.
I think there's other plans for that project.
Yeah, okay. That's why I was asking.
Because we're using grant funds, we can use CHIPS, we can look at some of our reserves as we go into that. We have another way of getting there as easily done. And that's going to take a little longer than these projects will.
And I didn't think ARPA could be used for roads.
Initially, it couldn't, but it's 10 million that they give us as ability to say, you can write off losses with 10 million. Every municipality has that ability. 130, whatever, 6,000 doesn't even come near the 10 million. So, we can write it off. Our accountant says, "Yeah, good to use it in any village you need." Except there's certain things you can't use it for. And these, these do qualify.
Yeah, I think the idea was to also include some of the smaller projects that, you know, would just be more of a nice thing to have, rather than it all just dumping into one big project in order to be able to.
Well, the bathroom, are we in compliance right now with wherever we need to be? I mean, that, that's, not to dive super into that project, but.
Compliance, not really.
Even in other areas, I can fill you in on that. Yeah, yeah, we're not at all. Yeah, not at all.
It's like a thing that we've put off for a long time.
Long, long time.
It's like, it's like, it's not a sexy thing, but like, it's.
For decades, it's been ignored.
It's been talked about a ton, but nothing's ever moved forward.
Okay.
And also, even the rug replacement at Village Hall has been in discussion for, since you've been here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I get it. We have to make choices and decide what's the priority and.
And did someone already ask this question? Does this, because I can't do the percentages in my head. Does this then use all of the ARPA funds we have available?
It should, it should use all the other funds by the time we get done.
And frankly, we want to use them all because of the time constraint. And so, this way, we're vetting them, we're putting them forward. Yes, we have a beginning, middle, and an end, and this is where it's going.
Yeah, we just, we need to make some hard decisions. We can't keep pushing ARPA down the road because if we don't, we could lose it.
Sure.
Okay.
And there's compliance reports that we have to submit periodically as well. So, now, now they'll be able to see that, yes, indeed, we are moving forward and using the funds. And that's a piece of the compliance report.
That's why we're starting here because if the board agrees with these projects, we'll get the proper estimates, we'll include the ARPA funds. Part of the budget is, Lily just said, we'll use them in the next budget year. We'll get it all done and everybody will be happy and we'll have accomplished quite a bit.
We're, we're behind where most other municipalities are with spending of ARPA funds.
Yeah, most of them are already.
Yeah, Rockaway, East Rochester, Brighton, they're pretty crazy.
They got a big chunk too. And the same thing with the town. The towns are already down the road, yeah.
Yeah, and some of these, actually, we can kick off right now.
They have their pickleball course.
Once we get solid estimates.
Yeah. Can I ask, what are, can I ask the committee, what are some of the things that almost made the list but didn't? So, what, what's item eight, nine, and 10?
Speed centuries.
That's actually in my budget.
Yes, in the budgets.
It just doesn't want a year, it's been good.
Windows at Village Hall.
There was windows. We're hoping also that we can get grants for that. There's other things that.
The shed.
The shed.
DPW cone shed. We talked about vehicles. We talked about other things of need, but.
Why don't we do this? Let's do this even then by the next meeting. Everything else, I like that. So, we start to see a larger picture of still what's out there, you know.
Yeah, these, these items are cherry picked.
Yeah, to say, this is really something we can make happen.
Yeah, and for good reason. You know, I actually talked to the, the crew at the shop of, you know, what was the, the more practical thing, either a larger cone shed, you know, that'd be functional, electricity, or a generator, you know, if we ever lose power at the shop, everyone's like, "Oh, man, the shed would be great. We could put stuff in there, you know, have more storage." But the more adult thing would be to have the backup generator in case we lost power.
Yeah, and I feel like we just talked about this too, at least in one of our meetings, about storms and they're getting worse and power outages and what we do if we needed to. We don't have any.
Anything, yeah.
And we depend on you all to get out and help during the storm.
No power, no fuel to vehicles.
Bless you.
You know, just the functionality of everything that we do in the shop is, is not there.
Okay, thanks.
The only thing I would say public-wise, I think the only thing we missed was the benches and launches now, which again, could be a budgetary item.
Well, and also, there could be, there's grant funding from Canal Corporation. I just received notice of another grant cycle coming up, where maybe we could take a look at that, about doing seeding along the canal, you know, as part of that. So, and I'm going to, that's going to be on the agenda for next Thursday. You know, some grants that are coming up, so we can really start taking a look at some of this.
But the biggest thing from the public that I recall was the arboretum, which we included.
Which we included.
I think we're pretty close to what the numbers they asked for. So, I, I don't see.
Invasive, they really emphasize that.
Right, I don't think there's too much pushback on that.
Yeah.
It was a priority.
But, yeah, we can look again. I think a lot of the other items that didn't make it were included, actually, in your wish list and on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is all the stuff that's been, you know, put out for years and years and years.
Okay, so I think the board at this point.
They're cooking buildings?
Yeah.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, I can see their money back and forth.
Yes, I can smell it.
Yeah.
So, think about these, but.
Thank you.
We have to make decisions because it's, I have these decisions and I include the funds and I include the projects into the budget or whatever we're going to do.
Do we make these decisions before the budget is set?
Yes.
Okay. And how do you want us to move that along?
Like, next meeting, I'd like you really to make some hard decisions.
Be prepared, yeah.
We, we can have those other items.
We can.
I don't, I don't even need them. Just, just you saying them was enough. I mean, is it better if we vote on it now?
That would be up to the board. This is, like I said, is our recommendation. We think these are the projects, really, the community, the board.
The reason why I want to vote on it is the bathroom. I want to get going with that.
I would love to get going on that.
I'm all for that.
And this was agendaed?
Yep.
Would, would the vote be, the motion be that you would like these proposed projects to be considered as part of our budget and process?
As part of the ARPA fund.
Yes, the ARPA fund, account of ARPA funds.
Right.
For these projects.
Right, for these projects.
Would be, but not, we're not specifically doing, like, approving this right now. We're saying we're going to make it part of the budget process.
No, we're saying we're.
No, we're saying we're going to approve this right now.
If the board is good with these projects, that you're saying these are the projects you want us to go ahead and pursue the ARPA funds.
Yeah, because we've had the ARPA funds now for a couple of years. And so, you know, we're down to the.
We might be able to do some right away and we might, some might have to wait to the budget.
Obviously, the bathroom would take a lot of planning.
Yeah.
The bathroom and the generator is going to take some.
Yeah, we're going to position it.
So, if the board's good that these are good ARPA projects and this is how you want to use the funds, I'll take a vote on it.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'm checking math. Can you give me a couple minutes and we'll come back?
Okay, we have, yeah.
Sure, sure.
For the trees, the $4,000 in trees, we want to go through, cherry pick some areas to either remove, like Norway maple.
Some of those invasives, compromised trees that we know are going to go.
One area, and I'll leave this up to you guys to decide on, is West Jefferson out by the ball fields.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we put together some of those spots that, because I know, you, you know it better than anybody in the crew, and then bring it back to us so we can really take a look?
Okay.
I think that'd be a lot easier for us.
I'll put together a list and then you guys can go out and check it out and see what we want to.
And so, this would be in addition to the normal planting that we do.
Yes.
Yes.
This is over and above.
Yeah.
Over and above, and you just said, Mayor Plummer, you just said removing some invasives, wouldn't that be under the item two, or no? You said something about.
Oh, the invasive removal. I think that's actually a fund to come in and kid those.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, some of the, some of them are pretty big too.
So, we're like, street trees, those are, that four thousand dollars is all new.
That's all new native.
Not removal of trees.
Native or non-invasive.
That's when you start to get expensive.
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, well, I mean, it would probably be part of that.
Okay.
So, um, you know, try to find areas that we can cut down the trees ourselves, so we're not making that expense. Um, but that would have to be part, if we are removing trees, is the removal of that tree.
Okay.
At least down to the stone.
So, in order to approve this, we would probably want to have specifics of that, or no?
No, really what we're doing, and I think, I think we're kind of cross-collinating some of these things, I think you're all thinking this is about our budget. This is about ARPA funds that are above and beyond our budget and the disposition of these funds for the projects in front of you.
That's clear.
Yeah, so.
But it does impact the budget, because twenty-five percent are.
Yeah, well, it's a lot of sewer.
It's out of, yes, yeah, yeah.
But sewer, sewers, you know, the whole.
Right.
Sewer's looking good.
Relating.
Right, so I think it's really, we have this money from the federal government. Do we wanna spend it on the following seven projects? The logistics of, um, you know, removing of invasives and all of that, all of this is above and beyond anything that we still always put in our budget for street trees, or for tree removal. This is good. This is good stuff.
Right.
So, this enables us to do even more than we normally would anticipate in a budget cycle like this. So, I, I think they're all great projects, and I'd like us to move forward on this, and I think it's a, a really thoughtful use of the ARPA funds. Because it hits on a lot of different cylinders here in our village.
So, the math, um, it's at about one thirteen before rand.
Right.
And then rand, it says a portion to be paid by the residents.
I don't know what that portion is, I mean.
So, even with that, you're still under your one thirty-one.
But we're leaving a little wiggle room in case things come, I didn't wanna budget to the dollar.
Yeah.
One thing that I'd like to keep our eye on, and we don't have to deal with it right now, is we're gonna have some money left over, probably, or maybe.
Maybe.
And so, what would we, we wanna use every dollar.
When we get done, when we get to this project, we'll bring, obviously, if we see that we're gonna have a nice chunk left over, we can bring it to the board, and the board can make a decision just to throw it back into trees.
Sure, okay.
Yeah.
So, I'll make the motion to approve the ARPA funds usage as listed in the meeting packet.
You have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Lanther.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, ARPA.
That was productive. All right, thank you. Um, for the invasives, are we going to lean on the friends of the arboretum to hire a contractor?
We're gonna talk about that offline, okay, yeah, yeah, I wanna just kinda, you know, because we have a time, hard stop. We'll, we'll get, get with you on that, and we, we wanna work with them, but there's also other entities and organizations that wanna work with us as well, that can really, really help us put together a long-term project, not just an immediate.
Something well thought of.
Yes, exactly, so we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that.
I'll do your voice at the field.
Yeah, exactly, um, okay.
I only have fifteen more minutes.
That's okay, we're half five, we're five thirty, because there's another meeting going on.
Okay.
So, village reserves, this has been a discussion we've had several times, what to do about the reserves. The committee met, what we decided is what reserves does the village really need to have? We have to start with what is our needs and how we get there. So, what you see in front of you is what we have for existing reserves and our suggested reserves. These are the reserves we say should be established for the village in the long term. Um, we gave initial amount of what we think max funding for those reserves should be. We provided you the number of years we feel that we should take to get to that max funding, and the amount of money you would have to put in that reserve every year. Now, some of those numbers stand out and go, oh my gosh, how are we gonna do that? Like, um, equipment for general, for seventy-five thousand a year into a reserve, that's very difficult for us right now. But the thought also is, we have to start somewhere. You know, we'd love, if we can squeeze some money to go into that reserve to establish it, and we might be able to take from the repair reserve that has no allocation, needs to be redone, that could be funded into some of these other reserves to give them their.
Court of seed money, you know, essentially, just to get the ball rolling.
To get the ball rolling.
And, and repurpose the funds in a way that we'll, we'll be able to properly access them in part one, but part two, properly access them for things that really have been identified appropriately in, you know, twenty twenty-three going forward. Because some of these funds, as you know, go way back to the seventies and are identifying things for, you know, I don't know, sewage treatment and, you know, water, you know, things that we simply don't have. So, um, this, I think, is, sort of gives the, the template, really, going forward. Um, for how we can repurpose this, Jeff can then help us create that proper language. Um, and, uh, you know, we can reallocate essentially and get these, the seed money in. The other thing too, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, we, we say seventy-five thousand a year, it can be up to seventy-five, it can be any portion of that.
It can be any amount, the board will make that determination. If we're looking to have it fully funded in ten years, that's the main.
That would be sort of like how it would play out if we could do that, but.
We wanted to give you, you know, a starting point, whether it's a good point, you know, obviously, it might not be where we need to start.
But we're not obligated, like, for the first one to say, oh gosh, every year we have to come up with seventy-five thousand. It could be one year, maybe, you know what, we think we could put in twenty, to keep, keep building this up. So, the idea is that we, at, at some point are building it up for these specific needs.
Correct. And it also could be, let's say, you decide, you use equipment, you decide to put ten thousand into the vehicle and equipment reserve at budget time. We get to April and I go, we've had a great year. I suggest the board increase that budget line for, to fifty thousand. And we put any extra we would have, go into that reserve, because we had such a great revenue year, we were able to move it in there.
And at the same time, not impacting what we need to have in the, in the general fund overall, that this is sort of, you know, it's the rainy day kind of stuff, is how I, I look at it.
Is it, is it possible to also take fund balance at the end of the year and move it towards?
That's what I'm saying.
That's what she said.
I'm not saying in April is a good time to start reviewing those numbers, March, April, and if things look great, shift some money, more money into those reserves to secure those lines. So, when I go over the reserves, we recommend.
Yeah, but also, I think, um, another thing that you had mentioned, this was early, early days when we were starting to put this together, when you guys were working on it, that this really does sort of bring us into greater compliance with the state comptroller.
Yes.
Because now, we're, you know, we're really delineating very specifically going forward, the needs that are, that are contemporary needs, that aren't, you know, based on something that no longer even exists, so.
These are establishing, A, you have a immediate repair, you have a place to go to grab that money, you're not gonna be a budget buster.
You're, remind me, um, you're not allowed to invest this money while it's sitting in a reserve fund, are you?
It just goes into CDs.
Okay, but that's not nothing.
That's not, no, I, we put it into ninety-day CDs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
You can't do anything more sophisticated than that?
No, but actually, there is advocacy from Nikon this year, as part of their sort of legislative, you know, to-do list, to hopefully free up municipalities to look for additional sources of where they can put their funds, or maybe perhaps rate of revenue, because it's very, very limited and very.
It's trying to keep it liquid and safe.
Yeah, yeah, of course, and I, I get not putting it into risky things, but something.
We're not going to Bitcoin?
The difference between Tesla calls, you know, maybe.
You know, I have a call, our banker, she calls me every three months, she goes, this is what I recommend. And she looks at what's the best rates, and we, we have had them with Mary Kay, with CMB for a long time. And we've been keeping them in the CDs and pretty much, most time I'm rolling it over for ninety days.
Yeah.
Because that gives us a, it's an okay window. It's not devastating. So, let me just go over the reserves we're suggesting. For general, we're saying an equipment and vehicle reserve, uh, an equipment vehicle repair reserve, a building reserve, a building repair reserve, an infrastructure reserve. Now, when we say infrastructure, that includes all infrastructure, that's talking roads, stormwater.
Everything above and below.
Above and below ground, that's, and that's village-wide, that would be for the entire village, okay. Um, and the building reserve, that is this building, DPW.
Yeah, this building.
Structures that we own, pavilions, docks.
Okay.
If we need to build, let's say we got crazy and wanted to build a whole new DPW, we could plan to use that towards it. Um, and then an infrastructure repair reserve, which would have been beautiful to have when the stormwater out front went.
Yeah.
You know, because that was a very scary number at that time. Excuse me, I got choked up.
Take a, take a little, okay, so, let's go to sewer, sewer.
Equipment vehicle reserve, an equipment vehicle repair reserve. You're seeing we're mirroring as much as we can between the two funds, because they really need to work in concert with each other. A building reserve, a building repair reserve, a sewer replacement reserve, this is a little different. Um, sewer repair reserve, this one is already established, we just need to make sure the language is good. Um, it's abstract, because we feel that's fully funded. A pub repair reserve fund, again, that's abstract, because we feel it's fully funded, and that's talking to Turner and everybody coming to, that's a good number. That should hold us for a while, it earns interest, so it is still growing, but it's not growing by adding any risk money to the reserve. The catastrophic reserve, which the board established.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that was funded fully, so the good news is, it's just earning interest and doing what it needs to do. The Wood Creek Repair Reser, well, Wood Creek Repair Reserve, that one still needs to be some workout with it. We believe it, it needs to be established, the concern, and Jeff wants to talk to you, because there's concerns, whether it's a repair, replacement, and if we have the right language for what.
So, it's a language review.
It's a language issue. Um, that one should be established, kept and established appropriately, and we believe it's fully funded.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
So, we're just really looking at the top.
So, the good news is you have four reserves that are fully funded and just need some language cleanup on a couple. So, that's our suggestion to the board, it's gonna be up to the board to say, you know what, these are what the village needs, and these are, we agree with these reserve suggestions.
This is about, the, the request is about two fifty K a year.
Correct, but again, we're gonna, we need to look at what hasn't been allocated. We have the one reserve in sewer, the two hundred and forty-seven thousand that has a murky past, because it started in water.
Yeah.
It got money from general at some point from highway equipment, for highway equipment, and then it just went off radar. We don't, we're not sure how it ended up in sewer, that's a question I have, because honestly, my thought is it's general money. But I don't know how much money has been added to it from sewer, because we just don't have the records going way back when. And it's probably easier to leave it in sewer, but I'm still looking at it, because general should get their money back, is my opinion.
Looking to go back to general, which is.
That money could be reallocated to some of these new reserves.
Sure.
Is the plan.
And if you look at the seed money, you know, that, that we're just calling it seed money right now for the first year going in, um, out of that two hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three and fifty cents, um, that only brings us, repurposing that to seventy-one thousand, five hundred dollars. So, then we have a remainder left in sewer, in this murky reserve, of a hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars. So, I really want us to make sure.
That we can find a way to.
Yeah, that we can find a way to really, uh, put this to good use, and if it has to stay in sewer, I don't know. But I really want us to look at general, if we can get this back in general.
It might even require a phone call to the state comptroller.
I think it will, that's where I think it's going.
Because we're not sure how, it just has, I don't wanna say murky, but it's just, there's not enough info.
Yeah.
There's nothing in the records.
Clear how it got there, okay.
But if you see, you hear highway equipment, that's every day of the week, and when the water fund closed, it should have went back to the taxpayers. Jeff's concern is it has two different tax bases.
Yeah.
So, you can't ship.
It's like an apple and orange.
So, it's very difficult, and that's where, you know, we have the troubles with that.
And this one is the one going back to seventy-four?
Oh, I think it goes back.
Or even further, this is the older one.
When was the last time it was contributed to?
Oh.
Well, that's the other question, if we contribute, you know, we really need to dig into that reserve and resolve it, but it might be, at the end of the day, might be, is there keep it in sewer, I'd rather try to get some for general.
Yeah.
If we can, but that might take a lot more work, I'm just warning the board. Um, but in the meantime, we can establish the reserves we need and work out that reserve somewhere down the road. So, this one, I think you need to sit with.
Yeah.
And think about, you know, do you agree with our assessment that these are the right reserves for the village?
Yeah, so, you know, that's why, thanks for presenting it and, you know, giving us the backup information and.
I gave you Turner's letter again. I gave you our vehicles schedule from our insurance, our building schedule, to kind of give you information on values and things we kind of use when you're looking at this. I did provide the DPW starting wish list and Village Hall tentative wish list.
And also, our schedules for roadwork sidewalks, so where's.
It's right here if anybody wants it, they're long, I'll send you the spreadsheets to try to print out, it's a little more difficult, but I can send you the actual Excel sheets.
Yeah, can you just send that to all of us, I know Justin would like.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
It'll be helpful.
Yeah, we finalized that today. There was a lot of late finalizing and all this. So, I'm gonna leave you with, if you have other wish list items, if you can get them to me sooner than later, I can try to look at them and see how we wanna incorporate them.
You know, one I wanna bring up, and I was gonna bring it up at the meeting, is, um, leftover from last year's budget, and that with the benches on State Street.
Yeah.
We allocated twenty-five hundred dollars in the last year's budget for.
We have it in this year's budget, we can go ahead and buy.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, we can buy.
Now, that, I mean, they're pretty much done doing what they were going to do on State Street. All we have to do is get the permits and put them up.
Do we have to lay the concrete pads or?
We don't necessarily have to put on a pad, the only reason why the one was, the first pad was altered was because of the crosswalk.
Oh, okay.
So, it was just.
So, it's even cheaper.
Yeah, so, we'll, we'll, we'll form down at the shop, and it's just basically where the legs would sit.
So, we can just place that order and order the benches.
No, but with that in mind too, because this is something that, um, you know, you, you folks have brought up, because you're constantly repairing benches that have been out there forever.
So, we made a, a fund for that.
Well, or, um, when you donate a bench, because I was reaching out to other villages, um, typically the donation will last, it'll be a ten-year donation, and then the bench is retired. Um, yeah, you've done some research as well, we're planning, you know, so, and, you know, people understand that the bench has outlived its life.
Yeah.
But, you know, and then the plaque can either be returned to the family, or maybe we can have something with a plaque, I don't know.
Okay, or you buy another, so everybody gets a turn.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly, they get to earn somebody.
I'd say after ten years or so, um, it's all cast aluminum legs.
Yeah.
They tend to break, so we bring them back to the shop, and we have to down there a lot of meetings once they get to a certain point.
They spend a lot of the water just working on benches.
Yeah, we try to bring in ten every year, and every board that's on those benches has to get cleaned down, sanded, uh, and refinished with the wood coats. And also, the legs, uh, get basically scraped down, sanded, um, and repainted.
And then one other thing too, that, um, I can't remember, it was a catalog, that there, uh, there's composite slats that are recycled, that are more sustainable.
Yeah, easier maintenance.
And, um, some of them are pretty, they look pretty good, I mean, we should probably take a look at that, you know?
Yeah.
Um, just going forward.
Yeah, but also, the cost.
Yeah, lower, that's a good point too, lower, you know, all of that, so, um, I think maybe it's an opportunity for us to kind of repackage it a little bit, you know? Um, with that.
Yeah, I think people just want the bench, they don't really get upset with it. It's like, what do you mean? Or whatever that is.
Yeah, right.
It was supposed to be cheap, but it's E P.
Yeah, right, oh yes, exactly, okay, so, we'll, we'll circle back on that, yeah.
All right, so just to end on that, um, any wish list items get to me, we'll work on that. I'll try to have things out a little more in advance for the board to review. I'm starting to put those numbers together. Um, I did get the new assessment, we're not getting that much more, but we're getting a little bit more, so. So, we'll start the process, and our accountant will be here for the meeting on the first to review with the board the concerns with breakout with sewer that we've been discussing, and go to legality and how we're able to do that.
Great.
That's, that's excellent, thanks for setting that up.
Right, and that's all I have right now. Any questions?
Any, anything else to add before we make a motion?